Marty Silver was here, and it was suggested by Marty yesterday I speak call.
Here he is now.
He's here.
Yeah, somebody in, somebody at the Water Authority to indicate that we are upset about the increase in the wholesale fees, and we're being treated unfairly, and the town is going to consider litigation. And I spoke to Larry Coolitt this morning, who's their controller, who will call Marty. He, his words to me, well, can we meet and discuss it? And I said, well, the best avenue would be talk to the Water Authority authority, and he would get back to us for the discussion. Is that good with you guys?
He's gonna call me back this afternoon.
Okay, so then you'll have some words for it. And any good advices, by letter, what your advice is?
No, I'll report that.
Okay?
Very good.
Okay, I'd gotten a letter or an email for a dog run, and I know we've gone through this once before, and I called Chuck and I said, what about a dog run? And he said that he had been working on it with planning, and that if the town wanted to do it, there is a, a piece of land, for lack of a better expression, at the Armory Park, where she's already got a walking trail for dogs now, that it'd be no expense to fence in an area and use it as a dog run. It's self policing, and so I just leave it up to you fellows if you want to do that.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, fine.
You had three resolutions you wanted to discuss?
Yes, four actually.
Can I see that again, Eddie? Thank you. What number, Tommy?
Well, they're under resolution numbers. Are you under resolution numbers there on that?
Oh, so I wouldn't have it, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I could just read them to you if you wanted to.
I can go get them.
No, I can.
All right, here you go.
Well, one was revisiting the Hightower homes. Mr. Zolo put on there to rescind the resolution.
It's on here?
Yeah.
Okay, and this was basically, there was a meeting between Mr. Brown, his attorney, John Bongino, Martin Simon, and John Zolo. And I'll just give, read you a quick paragraph. It says, "We reached an understanding wherein Mr. Brown has agreed to hire a design professional immediately, and we have, and to have that professional prepare reports and recommendations concerning the sites. He must also renew all expired building permits. Mr. Brown has agreed to tie back and side the structures, as well as have the above actions completed within two weeks. After the board, after the board's March 21st meeting, in return, we indicated to Mr. Brown that we would formally rescind the resolution of February 28, 2013, authorizing the town to, the town to tear down the structures." Yeah, I don't, I understand what John's saying, and it's a good first step, but I got a problem with Mr. Brown dictating to us that he'll start fixing his property that he's legally responsible to fix if we rescind our resolution. I think Mr. Brown should show us in good faith, go out there, fix the problems that exist, and then you rescind the resolution. Or reword the resolution, that the resolution is rescinded in three weeks if he complies with everything he said at that meeting. But just to rescind the resolution, just because Mr. Brown wants it, I don't think we should be taking orders from someone that has property that's made all out of our residents totally upset for many years now. It's just not the right thing. He came in here in January and told us he was gonna do everything to make things right. Well, we're 30 seconds from April. He hasn't made nothing right, but a lot of lip service. And we gotta make a decision.
John, has he made things right? No.
John, come on up.
Just to give you a little history, we had that board meeting January 8th, where Mr. Brown was here. After the meeting, downstairs in the hallway, myself, Mr. Brown, and Martin Simon were downstairs, and we were talking about the project, and I gave him what I would do regarding how to start. And my suggestion to him, and, and of that date, meaning the meeting we had on the 14th, you need a architect, an R.A., a registered architect or professional engineer to go there. He needs to do a report. At the 14th, March 14th meeting, I even gave a sample of one that was actually done seven years ago for the Hightower site by Frank Canata, a consulting engineer. Where he did, it's a five-page report, giving you very detailed, specific, step-by-step, starting from the foundation and moving forward, what needs to be done. At that point, just again, a little history back in 2006, the idea was, Hightower or contractor would do the work, Building Department and Frank Canata were gonna hand-in-hand go there, inspect, he would sign off, we would sign off. So I showed Mr. Brown, this is step one, this report, and we even gave him a copy. Without that, it's just spinning wheels here. To have contractors go there, to have contractors come to the Building Department, we've got dozens, foil forms, the file, I'll say it's about 12 inches high, they look at it and they walk away probably more confused than even before they started. And then to say to them, there's nothing been approved, and they're kind of, you know, and they don't want to touch it. And I explained that to Mr. Brown. When people see that nothing's been approved, they don't want a part of this project. And I said, but, I think the opposite is true. If you came to, and you could say to someone, someone may want to buy it, we have a permit, a current permit, an active permit, I have a set of drawings, sealed drawings from the town, here we go, you could start there tomorrow. I think someone would be very interested in that.
That's not the case at this time.
That's not the case, not the case. So in saying that, it sounded, or it seemed that on that date on the 14th last week, Mr. Brown was gonna start to do that. So today's the 21st, we have had no contact, I have had no contact with Mr. Brown since the 14th meeting, no one has called engineer, architect, and/or contractor, saying that even what we talked about a week ago has started to be done.
It seems unfortunately that we get a lot of lip service from Mr. Brown, and basically, he doesn't want to do anything he says he wants to do, he just wants to flip the property as is and put nothing into it. Well, in my business acumen, for the past 30 years, is you gotta put some money back into something in order to sell it. And that's what Mr. Brown needs to do. He needs to start, put a little money into it, do what you just said in that memo, which is excellent, John, and then we can move on. But to rescind the resolution today, is just basically, he's dictating to us. It's totally wrong. He's done nothing since the January meeting, and it's not right. Maybe to rewrite the resolution, that we, if you want to adopt it, we rescind it 30 days from now, if he's proven that to you that he's done the stuff. Otherwise, it reverts to Mr. Brown, and we continue. I think in 30 days, he'll probably do it. But just for us, for him to say, I'm not gonna do this for the town unless you rescind your resolution, that don't fly with me, and I'm sure it doesn't fly with anybody on this town board.
Well, I agree, since, again, January 8th, downstairs, the same plan we talked about two months later, nothing's changed. If a contractor comes in, it's really, I could play the story again, I would recommend getting the same thing, I'm not, I don't want to repeat, but, so, we've always said the same thing. Contractors have come, oh, you want it demoed, right, you Building Department? I go, you've never heard the Building Department say, we want it code compliant.
Right.
Or demoed. One or the other, take, take your choice, that's what we want. We don't have like, 'cause one contract, in fact, he came in right after the work, work session, came over, and he goes, I was at the work sessions, et cetera, Mr. Hartog from Easy Sell Homes or something, and he goes, you want a demo? I go, one, I wasn't even at the workshop, so he couldn't said, I wanted the demo to go, same thing, I said, here's what I want, A or B. And he said, okay, and then he, he said, I'm actually the new buyer, and then I heard later on he canceled the check or something like that.
What's the resolution now? If we don't rescind it, what's the action that will be taken? We're gonna go in and demolish?
Well, right now, we can't take any action on that resolution.
Yeah, to recorrect the resolution first.
Because the name, it says, it says Powell, not Brown.
Right.
That's an easy correction to make, and I don't want to tear these houses down. I've, I've been saying for the last five or six years, these houses are rehabable. Mr. Brown just needs to write a check to some contractors, go in there, clean these houses up, make the residents happy, make them code compliant, and then he could sell them, and recoup his money. But he just wants to flip them in the disrepair that they're in, without having to write a dime, it seems to me, and then tell us how to run the town.
Okay, well, let me just ask a question. So, the resolution that was, went on, it was a Thursday night meeting?
Right.
There wasn't ever in it?
Yes.
And we would have put on a new corrected one, which now gives him a, an edict, if you will, to go move ahead?
Gives him time.
To do it.
Right. I'd say in 30, at the next, a month, 30 days from now, have the town attorney's office have the proper resolution with the proper names on it, to do what it says, but not rescind the current one that we have right now.
But the current one you said is, in fact, not factual.
Yeah, and it...
It's factual except for one name.
Well, the, the problem that we're, John was working on this with Martin, so I'm kind of, you know, this is just the information I was given. The problem that they're having is that they are, they are trying to flip the property because essentially, they want someone who's capable of fixing it up to fix it up. So on top of the problems that they're having when they go to the Building Department, now there's this resolution from the Town Board that's floating out there.
I don't think they have a problem when they go into the Building Department, Matt, you have to restate that. He's told them what they need to do to fix the problem. He's not, they're not having problems with the building, the problem...
No, 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 you're right. I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, when people looking to purchase the property are going to the Building Department, they're seeing a host of problems that are gonna have to be corrected before they can even get these, these houses sold. That resolution is another problem on top of that, which may be hindering this from just ultimately getting done.
The only thing I can say is, basically, they're saying the name makes it unenforceable. I'm not really 100% sure of that, but if it, if it would've just said on there, this resolution, adopt the resolution today that goes in effect 30 days from today if he complies with what Mr. Bongino gave him at that meeting, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But for him to dictate to us, take, get ready your resolution, and then I'll start doing the work, that's not the way it works. You're supposed to get the permit first.
Okay, so if we don't, we said, if this resolution's withdrawn, then what occurs?
We'll have to put a new one on.
Yes.
We could do that today, we could read a correct one on.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
And give them 30 days, like Mr. McCarthy said. That will give them 30 days. However, we should be prepared to take the houses down. And I say that because, to go through this mechanism now, personally, I'm okay with that. I discussed it with Mr. McCarthy this morning, where we rescind that resolution this afternoon, read the correct resolution on, he'll have a period to see Mr. Bongino and get started. But for me, if he doesn't, I don't want to revisit it again, then we have to be prepared to spend the money, go in and have the houses taken out. Because it's not fair to those residents.
We're gonna look, look into it, but we may have to go back to step one in the process.
What's step one?
Public hearing.
Because the, the change in ownership complicates it.
But, but, so, it may be time-consuming, but at least, we're proceeding on the right path.
Yes.
So why don't we do that today? We all in favor of that?
Yes.
I mean, we can still do that. We can still rescind that and read on the correct resolution, and you can, okay, so I'm fine with that.
That will affect it 30 days, from, the Thursday night meeting, a month from now. So in case anything has to happen, we can make any adjustments to that meeting.
John, you spoke with him on the 14th, gave him your...
We had the meeting right in that room there.
And you gave him the...
I gave him a copy of it, actually, that...
And there's no contact back from?
No, none at all.
Okay.
You had another resolution?
Yeah, actually, there's one thing I didn't put on there. I asked John to correct the date that, I have to look into personnel really quick, for the 30-day extension for, for temporary town engineer. I asked John to put the date, the date out to...
She told me today she's corrected it again.
Okay, so it'll be to the, at least to the next meeting, so we're not in, have a seven-day empty period, right?
We're gonna find out what the, it has been corrected.
Okay, no, it's all right, it's almost, it's almost been corrected, that's fine. Another thing I had here, which I don't, I don't understand this, this is a memo from John Zolo to Frank Derubias, and it says, "I'm in receipt of a copy of your letter dated March 11th to counsel to the Planning Board regarding reposting property in order to grant an adjournment. Your letter was consistent with my comments to the Planning Board in that it was not legally required to post this property. Since this matter was currently on the Planning Board agenda, however, I recommend reposting of this property in order to keep the residents informed of this action." And this is, yeah, it doesn't make sense to me. Then down below it says, next sentence, and I didn't get a copy of the memo in between, it says, "In light of your letter, I will not request the applicant to repost the property." You know, this is, this is an important piece of property, I mean, this is, you know...
Explain it again. Something is postponed?
Right.
At the current ordinance, they don't have to repost the property.
Right. And this is the Carlson property, which a lot of people in Kings Park really want to know about. And, and here's Frank Derubias saying to John Zolo, "Well, in light of your letter, John Zolo's letter, I will not request the applicant to repost the property. I didn't see John Zolo's letter in between, but I don't know why we would do that. The people need to repost this property, and I think everybody on this board feels the same. I don't know what, I didn't see John's letter, so I can't say. But I have this to go by Frank's letter stating, 'In light of your letter, I will not request that applicant to repost this property. If this is not consistent with the intent of your letter, please contact me.'" And I think everybody on this board, for this change zone petition, 2012-02, for the Carlson property, I think everybody on this board would want it reposted, not, not, I don't know what John's letter said in between, why he's saying not to repost it, but I think that's not proper for the residents in the area.
I don't, I don't, I don't know about the in-between memo. No, I don't know about it either, the only thing I do know...
Let me see, I didn't see that one.
I do not have all the details, but I believe it had to do with, maybe you know, an adjournment for that hearing with the Planning Board.
That's what the word says.
That's been adjourned time and time and time again, and I believe, what I know about it, which is minimal, they didn't believe, the applicant's attorney didn't believe it needed, it needed to be adjourned, because we're, he's waiting, Carlson's waiting for this IS zoning to be worked on, which Planning's working on, to see if that fits what he wants to do, as opposed to going to heavy industry. So, he wanted the hearing postponed or adjourned, and he was told by the Planning Director that he wouldn't permit any further adjournments, which is really in the purview of the Planning Board Chair, who ultimately did adjourn it. I think that's, I believe that's what this is all related to, is that Mr. Derubias stated, allegedly, "I'm not going to adjourn it any further," and changed his mind, because he was advised that it's the Planning Board Chair who makes the adjournments before his board.
Well, but I think the issue here is...
Well, Frank is saying, he recommends basically posting the property whenever there's a next hearing.
That's the issue, right?
And John Zolo's letter's saying, he's telling Frank, you don't have to, apparently, to this letter. And I think that John Zolo needs to know, and Frank needs to know, that I think, now I'm only speaking myself, but I'm pretty sure the Town Board supports me on this, that whatever happens on that property, it should be reposted, because the residents need to know. So maybe, well, you could let Mr. Zolo know that, you know, we want this property, when there's a hearing, reposted.
I'm not familiar with that, but I'll, we'll lay that to John.
I mean, I don't know why he wouldn't want it reposted, I mean, that's not right.
Well, it would also depend what's in the town code.
That's what he probably...
Yeah. You know something, and if he's not responsible to post it, then the Town of Smithtowns will go over there, and should, if there's a hearing, should post it on the municipal right away to let the residents know, if the applicant don't have to. The people in that area should know what's going on.
But there's no doubt that that is a sore issue, and there's no doubt that the public should be aware, so whoever posts it, it should be posted.
Yeah, and if he don't want to post it, Carlson, then the Town of Smithtowns should post it in the municipal right away.
I don't disagree with you.
I'm sure everybody here agrees with that, actually.
Do you have another...
Yeah, I just had, just one thing for Vinny, I was just curious, because I saw the IQM 2 enhancements, Vinny, could you come up?
Oh, you had one about the, you had one about the computer too?
Yes. That's the computer, this one, the IQM 2 enhancements, I'm just curious what they are, because it really didn't say much what they were in the back.
Well, why is it private, there are people like you do, and it's...
It's the internal workings of all resolutions that come onto the Town Board, and, you know, Vinny is the expert of IQM 2. Just, just let us, I'm just curious what they are. I'm sure it's good things, but I just let everyone know.
Well, there are attachments, the attachments are pretty explanatory, but the main thing here is, is...
No, they are explanatory, but I think you need to explain it best to us.
What's happening now is, is we need to expand our meeting groups. What are meeting groups? Meeting groups, a Town Board, a Town Board Agenda, a Water Authority Agenda, and presently, you sit as the Site Plan Review Board. That's a separate board, with separate, with separate members, happens to be the same as the Town Board and the Board of Water. And when you, with your town, with the, with the Site Plan Review and a separate agenda, legally should be, should be affixed or should be set up. We now put those, when you do do an agenda, you put them on the regular Town Board meeting. They actually shouldn't go there. But that, along with, we don't...
Let me interrupt you a second. Are you saying, I think, that we should have the same kind of an agenda as we have for the Water Authority?
Yes.
An agenda for Site Plan Board?
Right.
Okay.
Because, because...
No, that's okay.
Well, because, you know...
But then you have to adapt the thing to do that?
It's just, it's just a separate meeting group. It's, it's not any more work.
It's a program, separate program.
It's not any more work, you still have to type it in, but you're not gonna type it in under the Town Board Agenda, you're gonna have a separate agenda. And including in this is the agendas that will be generated for the BZA and the planning. What'll, what that, what'll happen is, is those meeting groups then will put everything in one spot. So you'll be able to have agendas for the BZA and planning, you as the Town Board will be able to review those BZA plannings, but haven't jumped through ropes and, and asked for people to fax your stuff over, you can go on and you could see it. It gives the public a little bit more of a, they're able to see it also whenever it's available, whenever the Town Board sees it, wants it available. And at the end of the day, it'll also have a home for the, for the minutes. Presently, anybody that wants to see any BZA or planning information, they need to foil it. That foiling causes us to have to, the person to have to send the foil, it has to go up to the Town Attorney, they have to spend time to say, okay, send it down to the Clerk's Office, and Clerk's Office has to go and do, do the research. We, we save that time. And over the course of, since 2009, since we've instituted this, the Town Board minutes, we have not had one foil. We've had, and it saves us hundreds of dollars, in fact, thousands of dollars, of time and effort, where the town, now the group, the people who want to see certain things can go on to the web and see it on their own.
Great. You and I had talked about also, now you said it was the next step to this?
Yes.
Is basically where...
It's just to expand.
No, not only this, but the next step after this, basically, where this will actually be doing the minutes. So the clerks downstairs won't have to sit there for a week after a meeting?
Right.
Typing stuff, and people won't have to wait?
Well, actually, that's...
Two weeks to get it?
Actually, that's...
Is that the next step after this?
That's, no, it's included in this, that's actually a throw-in.
So basically, they'll be doing BZA, planning, Town Board?
No, 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 no. First thing we're gonna do is, is we're gonna have the minutes transcribed by this company from, from, from the Town, Town Board Minutes.
And, and that's fine with your legal statute for keeping hard copies and everything?
Yes, everything is, everything, instead of, instead of our office typing them, IQM 2 is gonna have somebody on staff to type them. We have to review them, and we have to okay them, but at the end of the day, those things get done 24 to 48 hours.
And when will the implementation of this take place? Especially the minutes take...
Once, once it's approved?
Yeah.
It should take maybe one, two meetings, because we have to make sure that our office is happy, and Maureen does the minutes, that she's happy with the format, and so forth. But it's all gonna be done pervading, just like we do now, everything will be exactly the same. The key here is, is we'll be able to get these minutes back much quicker.
And I think everybody's gonna have to know, and all, and not just Town Board, but when you get to planning and BZA, people are gonna have to address Adrian as the Chair, John G. as the Chair, the Supervisor as the Chair, I think, in order for these minutes not to be stepping all over each other. They're gonna have to, you know, a lot of people who talk over each other, you're gonna have to, with something like you're doing now, you're gonna have to be a little bit more careful, I would think.
Hang on one second, I mean, we, we, Maureen listens to all the...
I know, she's good, but now you're gonna have an outside company doing it.
But at the end of the day, it's still gonna be our office who's gonna...
Check the clarity?
Yes, they're gonna do the proofreading. And nothing gets done without our proofreading. And if she sees something that's out of character, listen, it's on video, so, you know, you just go to the videotape and you'd be able to see it. So it's clarified, not only by tape, it's also done by video and audio, which we're right on, we're on right now. So it's, it's, we do a redundancy, but at the end of the day, the wasting water, I mean, Russell's office, they'll have these minutes much quicker, so that secrets that take so long will be done much quicker, because they'll have the information that much faster.
Will you be doing a Conservation Advisory Board with this also? Because that's important for subdivisions to move them along.
It's possible, it's, you know, we can, you know, meeting groups are unlimited now. So we can also do, if, we can do the Advisory Board, along with the BZA and planning, and we can also do bid openings. I mean, it's, it's unlimited to what we can do, and the great part is, is it's all in one little spot. You want to see something?
Believe me, I love it. You know, I'm just, I just wanted to know what the enhancements were, and they were gonna do the minutes.
The transparency part of this for the public, whether they look at it or not, they feel that much more comfortable that they can go and see what has to get, that they want to see, without having to ask for it. And that's a good thing, you know, so...
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, could I go back to the Hoyt Farm, because my math is awful? I said $28. It's $280 a day for 70 kids. That's approximately $1,400 a week. I don't know how long the camp goes, maybe it's a six-week camp, that's an awful lot of money, especially if they're residents. I mean, I'm not so sure I understand the reason for the fee. I know, it's, because you said it's a private organization.
Yes.
But if the patrons are all residents, who have a right to use the beach?
But is it, what it comes down to is that it's a private organization that's using town property.
Okay, that's the way you view it?
Yeah, and we need to have a fee associated with that.
Do you want to talk about the fee? I mean, this is not for profit camp. I mean, are you got, are you happy with that kind of cost?
What is our fee right now? I don't really know what it is, I didn't hear, I don't know what you're saying.
Well, it's about, it'll be about 14, I thought it was 380 a child?
About three, something like that, right? 370, 360, a...
I thought I, they told me 70 children, a day go to the camp. So you do the math, I'm not good at it.
Yeah. Well, what did you come up with a total, that what their fee would be?
It's approximately $1,400 a week, approximately.
Their fee would be $1,400 a week or $1,400 for the summer?
Week.
Week.
And I don't know, five weeks, six weeks?
If they're town residents, it is a strong fee. I mean, there's no doubt about it, the kids are all town residents. The whole thing is, how many are and how many aren't.
Yeah, they're...
Yeah, well, there's no way to ascertain that. They, she maintains in that letter they're all Smithtown residents.
At the Knox School?
Yeah.
How, how, there must have been something in the past that where we arrived at that number?
Well, they agreed to it in the past.
Yeah, and she, and she says in that letter somewhere, she doesn't know how to ever would agree to that.
See, I don't know how many other day camps are still using our facilities, Parks would
know, I don't know. But we, what we have to be cautious of is they have, as I said, that policy. If they're still charging that fee in that manner at Parks, then we would have to be careful of singling out one institution and telling them, well, you can go, but everybody else has to pay. I'm sure the other, the other people that use those facilities as day camps would come in and say, well, we want it for free also.
I think the one that goes to Hoyt Farm is not a Smithtown agency. I don't think so. I'll tell you what, we could delay this, and we're doing a little more research, and I'll just tell them we're doing further research.
But we'd like, and I think part of it, I have no problem with reducing the fee, especially